It's officially nine thirty. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If the clerk could take the roll, please. Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Okay, the next item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. There's a second.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Look. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have the review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes from our July twenty-eighth County Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have no items under Chair's remarks today, so we will move directly into Committee Reports. The first one is Management Committee Report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's all informational, but people can take time to look at it on their own time.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner West. I think most of those items were acted on directly last County Board Meeting, so now Transportation Committee Report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee did meet on Monday, August first, here in the Government Center, and we have five items for your consideration this morning. First, the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the preparation of a highway right-of-way plat for the realignment of County State aid Highway fifty-four located in the city of Columbus. This is the service road on the west side of thirty-five, right there by Running Aces.
And I'll offer the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Next, the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of the right-of-way for the alignment of County State aid fifty-four located in Columbus. And this is, this is directly regarding one just before us, and it's the acquisition of the right-of-way, not just drawing the plat.
And I'll offer the resolution. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Item three is the committee recommends authorizing a contract with Braun Intertec in the amount of forty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars for geotechnical services related to the reconstruction of Hanson Boulevard from J Street through Crosstown Boulevard.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved. There's a second.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval of a purchase of service agreement with SRF Consulting for support services regarding the Trunk Highway ten Armstrong interchange project in the amount of sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars, and to further authorize the Chair of the County Board and the County Administrator to execute that agreement, subject to review by the County Attorney as to form a legality.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Lastly, Madam Chair, the committee recommends approval to increase the contract by sixty-two thousand dollars to a total of four million three hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-four cents for the successful completion of the reconstruction of Centerville Road from Burt Street to Main Street in the cities of Lionel Lake and Centerville.
I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, you'll see there are four informational items for your perusal, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schulte and Commissioner Gamache.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions. One of them was on item number seven. The committee discussed a request by MINDOT for cost participation in the Trunk Highway ninety-seven Bridge over thirty-five, city of Columbus. I was just kind of curious what their, what the request might have been.
Doug.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schulte, Commissioner Gamache, County Board Members. My name's Doug Fisher. I'm Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. As you know, MINDOT, original plan was just to replace the existing two-lane bridge as a two-lane bridge. We all realize it needs to be expanded to a four-lane bridge with the appropriate turn lanes. MINDOT is coming to the conclusion that to build the bridge and maintain traffic in any form, they really do need to build the ultimate bridge. Again, they, they're playing the finance card, say, we, they'd do it but for they don't have the budget to do that, and they were asking us if we would pay the, the extra, or commit to paying the extra, and they would go ahead with the design of the ultimate bridge configuration out there. And so, we talked about that. We want to, again, get the proposal in writing, that we will come back and bring that to the Transportation Committee and the County Board for action. But the, the good sign, I think, is the fact that MINDOT is seeing the light and seeing, seeing the right way to do this thing, and it's just getting us another step closer to what we all know needs to happen, is reconstruction of the entire interchange.
Good, good. Madam Chair, one other question. Bunker project over in the east side of Andover. Just wondering how we're moving on. Has MINDOT made any decisions on that? And?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Gamache, early last week, they said they had hoped to have a decision for us by the end of the week. We have not received any indication on that project at this time. So, we're still on a holding pattern on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Doug, just for those who maybe don't know what's going on with that situation, could you elaborate so that people understand exactly what the situation is?
Yes. What, because we're using federal funds for the construction of this project, leveraging our town, county tax dollars to the federal funds to rebuild Bunker Lake Boulevard, there are certain requirements of the contract that MINDOT and the Federal Highway Administration requires us to include in our contract. And one of those requirements are that a certain percentage of the contracted work needs to be given out to disadvantaged business enterprises, or DBEs. They could be a woman-owned business, or any other business that can't compete in the marketplace with kind of your mainstream contractors and subcontractors. On our project, they had a fourteen, a greater than fourteen percent goal for using DBEs on a ten-million-dollar contract. That's about a million and a half dollars of the work was supposed to be subcontracted out to these DBE contractors. The, the low bidder, when they submitted their bid, did not indicate that they could achieve the full DBE percentage, and they have the right to defend that decision, that they can't do that by showing a good faith effort, by submitting all their documentation, that they did their due diligence in contacting DBE businesses, getting quotes, incorporating those into their bid. MINDOT Office of Civil Rights, their EEO office, is the sole decider of whether or not that good faith effort met the stringent standards, and until they do decide whether they are certified to proceed with the County Board awarding that contract, we can't do anything. So, they have been going over this. I understand that the contractor submitted over three hundred pages of documentation for the Office of Civil Rights to review, so it's, can be elaborate and time-consuming, obviously. For them to not certify a bidder has, is, is a legal precedence, so I want to, they want to make sure that they do it right. And again, we just can't do anything on our end. We, this was a requirement of the contract. We included it. They're in charge of reviewing it, and we are on hold until they either say it's okay to award to this low bidder, or they will say you cannot award to this low bidder, and at that time, we have the option of going to the second low bidder, or even canceling the contract and rebidding the contract. So, we're on hold right now.
Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. I've, I've often commented on my amazement of the speed of government, but the concern I have, of course, is a, you know, your season for building. Obviously, in Minnesota here, we have a limited time to do that with the, with winter approaching. So, if there's a delay, Doug, is there, I would assume there's inflationary cost in, in pushing it out a year, or whatever the timeframe is, who, who's responsible for that increased cost?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Look, that, that's a good question. You know, if we award, the contractor needs to submit all documentation to successfully be awarded the contract. And so, they're bearing the risk of, if they don't submit all the proper documentation, that if there's any change in the schedule due to something that they caused, they would be liable. So, at this point in time, I would anticipate the county would have no additional cost. That would be theirs to bear. But what it does do is it does change the whole schedule and the staging, as you mentioned. You know, in Minnesota, we have two seasons, construction and winter, and we just burned, I mean, we opened bids on this on June twenty-eighth. We're already at a position of losing two months of construction, and even a week in the summer is better than three months in the winter, as far as construction's concerned. So, they're going to run the risk of having the staging changed such that they have additional costs, and they may have to bear those, because again, it's no fault of the county. It was their fault that caused the delay. And we'll, we'll have to see. And again, until MINDOT makes that final determination, if they're going to certify the contract or not, we, we can't even address that issue or not either, right now. So, it is very frustrating. Again, this is not an unusual circumstance. All, most of our projects are supplemented with federal funds, and we have this requirement, and we've had certain delays before, but not really to this extent. So, this is, this has been a little frustrating for us.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Any other question? Great. Then we will move on to Parks and Community Services Committee Report. Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's several items for our consideration. I might ask John Von Dilleni to step forward. Each of these items are a little bit curious. None of them overly complicated, but they deserve some explanation, further explanation. So, Madam Chair, there are several action items. I think there are six of them. And the first one's regarding the County Board to authorize amended grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for the assistance in reconstruction of CASA one sixteen. Can you comment about it?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the record, I'm John Von Dilleni, Division Manager for the Park and Community Services Division. This item relates to the project that Doug Fisher was just talking about, the widening of County State aid Highway one sixteen. As we've seen with many other projects like this that adjoin a county or regional park, in this particular case, there's going to be a widening of the road that will have an impact on some of the park land that's going to need to be converted to roadway and shoulder. Because some of these lands were either acquired with or improved with federal land and water conservation funds, there's a requirement in federal statute that those impacted lands be replaced with lands of equal market value and recreational usefulness. So, we've already gone through the process of this four F three conversion with the Highway Department, with Minnesota DNR, who administers the Lockon Program on behalf of the federal government, and we're in a position here where there will be an impact to about four acres of parkland along the south side of CASA one sixteen. In light of that, we will be replacing those impacted parcels with a parcel on the southern part of the park, as you see just south of CASA fourteen. That's land that was previously purchased by the Highway Department for right-of-way purposes when CASA fourteen was upgraded, with the idea in mind that they may be needed at some point for replacement. So, Minnesota DNR and the feds have approved this. This is really a housekeeping item to keep this Bunker Lake Boulevard project moving forward, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second.
For their discussion?
Thank you.
Discussion?
No.
Not? Roll call vote. Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And secondarily, item number two, again, is a grant amendment, extending a variety of different grants. I think we have some residual monies that we'd like to redirect into other projects. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Cordiak, there are three projects that are affected with this particular action of the County Board. The first two that I'll describe are existing projects that we're doing with Park and Trail Legacy Funds. One is going to be the redevelopment of Riverfront Regional Park. The other project is our contract that we have with the Conservation Corps Minnesota Program. The Riverfront Project was set up to be phased over a two-year period using Park and Trail funding. We have already secured the first year. The County Board has entered into that agreement with the Metro Council. There's a second year appropriation that's coming, and in lieu of doing a brand-new agreement, the thought was it would just be easier to amend the existing agreement. So, that's a decision of the Metro Council. So, it's simply to increase the, the project cost and the duration of that project. The same thing is true for the Conservation Corps Minnesota Program. With regard to the slide in the center, that's a picture of Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park, we have, as a result of some good project management by our staff, funds remaining in a, an existing project that we would like to redirect towards the construction of a fishing pier on the southeast corner of Snakeo Lake. And when the County Board approved the master plan for that project, we had that actually in mind. There's a handicap ADA trail to that location, so that'll complete public access to the lake for fishing, and it's in a very popular place for trout fishing. So, I know our, our, our Fisher people are very anxious to see this development occur, and that is the nature of those three amendments.
Thank you, John. I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
And thirdly, Madam Chair, and once again, Sugar Hills. We've talked about it oftentimes. This is now to award a contract for the construction of portion of the Sugar Hills, a trailway system to Peterson Companies. Can you comment, John?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Commissioners, Commissioner Cordiak, this is a six-hundred-foot gap in the Sugar Hills Regional Trail Development Project. As you may know, there's an existing portion of the Sugar Hills Trail that currently exists from Lake George Regional Park north through a golf course in St. Francis, or Oak Grove, up to the northern portion of that golf course, and then it terminates on the east side of Lake George Boulevard. At the same time, we have a new portion of the Sugar Hills Trail that's being constructed along Bridge Street, and then south along Lake George to the northern point there you see with the green star. And that's a, that's a portion of the CASA twenty-four project. Where that leaves us is with the six-hundred-foot gap. And so, in order to complete the connection between Lake George Park and downtown St. Francis and the Sugar Hills Trail, there's a need to complete this gap. And we felt the best time to do that was to partner now with highways, when this other project is being done, to work with the two cities. And both of the cities have agreed to contribute fifteen thousand dollars each, that being Oak Grove and St. Francis, leaving a balance of forty-three thousand dollars that would be paid for through Environmental Trust Funds, which are dollars from the Metropolitan Council to make this project whole. And we had some very good bids on this project. This one came well within the estimates for the project. We're anxious to get this done, and I also want to extend a thank you to the County Highway Department for working with Parks and the two cities on, on some of the minor land acquisition that needed to take place as part of this project as well. So, we are ready to move this forward.
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Excuse me. Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is regarding the Department of Transportation's desire to have an access agreement with the county to accommodate ground well-monitoring system that will adjoin our county park there. And I think someone could move that item if they're ready to.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There's a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, can I ask, and John, I'm not sure if I had to clarify, so much this project at this location is, is highway in its orientation, why is it the park's action? Is it because it's on county park property at the well, so it's park land?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, so, let me just kind of set the context for this. The Sugar Hills Regional Trail Corridor extends along Patterson Drive from the west. It crosses State Trunk Highway forty-seven and extends to the south and east through the St. Francis Middle School property, connecting to Bridge Street and connecting to that corridor I just described in the last action that you took. At Highway, Trunk Highway forty-seven and Patterson Drive, we have a situation right now where we have children especially who are crossing Trunk Highway forty-seven at essentially an uncontrolled intersection. So, there is a safety concern. It's, it's of great interest to the school district, to the city, and to the county, because this is part of our proposed regional trail corridor. The county has moved forward with an application for TAP funding through the Metropolitan Council regional solicitation process to construct a tunnel at this location to provide safe passage from the east to the west sides of this highway. In order to gain a better understanding of what the groundwater geometrics are in that area, which are unknown, because there has not been any good groundwater monitoring done in that area, the desire is to go in, put in a groundwater monitoring well for twelve months, so we understand what those geometrics look like, what the groundwater hydrology is, such that if we're in a position where this project is approved and we're ready to move forward with design and engineering, we have that data available, so that we can get right on it and not wait another year to do testing. So, regardless of whether it happens now or it happens in the future, we're still going to need that data. Or we're trying to be proactive, get ahead of it, and ensure that we can launch this project more expeditiously and save those dollars. It's a minor cost, about, we're looking at about seven thousand dollars to do this one-year groundwater monitoring that's part of this project. But in order to gain access to the right-of-way, we have to have this agreement with MINDOT to get in and actually do this.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
Mr. Von Dilleni, Commissioner Cordiak, I think it's safe to assume that this is under the parks' agenda, because it's the regional trail.
Yes.
Even though it's going under a state highway, it's the regional trail, and that's why it's on the parks' agenda and not a transportation agenda.
Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. I, unfortunately, we're, we're building a tunnel. I think the request of MINDOT was to put a stoplight in here, and, and the indication was that it didn't meet merits, and I think part of the merits are fatalities. And so, as communities in, in St. Francis and elsewhere, I don't think that we are eager in waiting for fatalities to occur before we meet our merits for a necessary stoplight. I was personally witnessed a very close call. The mayor has witnessed close calls. This is a, Patterson Drive is a trail coming down here from a populated area, a housing project. So, kids are coming right into the line of fire. And imagine kids coming from the elementary school over on the right side of the map, if folks can see that, going over to McDonald's or County Market. I mean, it's an, it's an absolute perfect storm for what they're actually seeing out there. So, it's, it's no surprise. And after speaking with the police chief, and this is getting more into the weeds than just the ground monitoring, but as, speaking with the police chief, they're very interested and excited about this project, because they continually get calls in this area. And so, that, that's kind of the history behind it. Now, we are applying for two thousand nineteen dollars, I believe it is, through TAB. So, a discussion that we may want to have at this board is if we're successful in getting those funds for, through TAB, what the probability of advanced construction is on something like this, and how do we afford that, and how does it fit into the budget and that sort of thing, to then be repaid in two thousand nineteen when those dollars come through. So, this is a much-needed, I think there's better solutions, but a much-needed solution to a, to a problem that's in the area there, and I, I would appreciate everyone's support.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Madam Chair, at this point, we'd like to award a contract for the Mississippi River Regional Trail Improvement to Rachel Contracting. John, this is a kind of a much-oriented trail system, but can you comment about this next step?
Sure, I would be happy to. Commissioners, this trail alignment is behind Ashton Avenue. This is in the city of Fridley. It's part of our Mississippi River Regional Trail Corridor. As you can see there, it is positioned between the BNSF Railroad Right-of-Way and the back of the, of eight homes that are that, that align on Ashton Avenue. The trail was originally constructed in the nineteen eighties, so it's seeing its age. We have some erosion issues. We have some fence. The fence along the right-of-way there on the east side is old, and it needs to be replaced. The trail surface itself needs to be removed and replaced, milled and overlaid. So, it's a combination of erosion control, landscaping, buttressing up that, that hill that slopes down quite steeply to the east, and then repaving the, the trail surface. So, it's a, it's an asset preservation project.
I'd like to move it.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, we have a, we've had a relationship with the University of Minnesota, engaged with them to create some rather unique opportunities, some shelters and building-type edifices that we can provide programs for at the Rice Creek Chain Lake Orgo Nature Center. I think that we're very excited about what they've been creating. Oh, here's some, yeah, some pictures here. Each of them are different and unique, providing shelter, providing speaking platforms. We're very happy with the outcomes. The U of M jumped right into it, gave us a great deal of volunteer time, found some outsides, financial support for their lumber and projects. So, everybody had a really bright outcome. Commissioner Silveraja, thank you too for that the other day. And we started to extend us, we have some monies that we can extend to another kiosk, as I recall. We'd like to simply amend this agreement to give them a little further opportunity into next season to think about any other opportunities that we can create with those monies that are available to us.
I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
And I would just comment, absolutely incredible work that they're doing out there. It is a wonderful partnership, and the professor from the university was thrilled to have this opportunity for him and his students. He indicated he came from another university about 10 years ago, where he had some opportunity to get some of that hands-on learning. And, but to actually be able to do it outside rather than inside, that just has been great. And for all of the campers who have come out there for the YMCA Day Camp, it's been great for those students as well, just to see what's happening. And they've been very interested, and they're just doing a marvelous job. So, looking forward to continuing this relationship, because it really is a win-win. Okay, with that, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, the other items are for information purposes only, but they are interesting. Once our annual firewood sale, tell your friends, now's the time, and you can stock up. The next one, the Parks Department did talk a little bit. We were approached by a disabled veteran. We talked about doing a reduced admissions thicker to those people who can establish that they are indeed a disabled vet, where there are other examples of that in the metropolitan system. We don't think it impacts particularly a large number of people, and we see the obvious benefit of that. So, we're interested in taking a further look at that, may adjust our policy to accommodate that. And lastly, in your backyard, Commissioner Peltier Lake, the Rice Creek Watershed District would like to do a drawdown to that lake, a significant drawdown, because they're having some serious problem with green algae and floating vegetation. So, they think that what they need to do is drop it, either freeze and die and here and whatever, so they can one day bring it back up. They're testing how that's going to work for them in the long term, but they think at least in the short term, they will have some positive outcomes from there. So, they're just letting you know that they are looking at doing that in the days ahead. That would then conclude my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I did attend a meeting that they had about that. It's been a very bad year for curly leaf pond, and that will just only continue to get worse if they don't do something about it. So, I think that the residents are certainly understanding and recognize that something needs to be done. So, thank you for that. And is there anything else to come before the County Board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Second comment, I have to. You know, in my experience, we've, this County Board has annually done a budget all these years. It's a responsibility of ours. Typically, in the process of doing that, we've had a different variety of gatherings, talking about budgetary considerations, and thinking about where the county needs to go. We give staff guidance. We give administration guidance. We make a determination as to what appropriate levy amount might be. We make determinations about what we might have for budgetary issues and problems. But this year, it's August, you picked a date. We need to come up with preliminary levy by September 30, and we have not talked one time to one person that I'm aware of, or that I've been engaged with, to talk about the budget. I think it's very curious. Yeah, I recognize it's a busy campaign year. It's a busy summertime. It's a busy time, but that's no rationale. We're not having meaningful and responsible discussions about our county budget. We just haven't done it. I've talked to our county administrator, and the answer is, oh, there's too many unknowns. There's too many things that we don't quite know. We're still figuring it out. When we flesh it out, we'll deal with it later on. Well, you know, I wouldn't mind clarifying what those issues are, understanding what the problems are, understanding what I should be looking at, understanding where these things are going, and I really don't. I just kind of hear there are issues floating around that are beyond me. Well, then the question is, okay, how do we set a levy? Well, the answer I get from our administrator, who we all dearly love, is, well, I'll just pick a number, throw it on the table, and you guys can address it. Well, I mean, he didn't exactly say it like that, but the answer is, I'll give you some estimate of what the levy should be. You know, I will tell you that it is not his role, and is not his responsibility to tell me what my projected county levy should be for this upcoming year. I also cringe the thought of what influences he would use to make, to bring that number forward. If he's not talking to us, how does he come up with that projected number? You know, and not only that, I mean, if a number were offered, I could not accept it, for I've had no role or participation in its creation. So, I think it behooves us to talk about the budget, as so many other governmental jurisdictions have. Everybody does. We don't seem to need to do that. Actually, I feel uncomfortable. I feel like I'm operating in a vacuum with no idea where we're going. I think we've got some budgetary issues that are ahead of us, and I really don't know. How could I?
Let me just interject for a minute. Commissioner Cordyak, I know that we have talked about setting up a meeting for sometime later this month, and I think it is a mischaracterization to say that Jerry's just going to pick a number. He has been asking departments to gather information about what the impact is on their budget currently, based on the information they know on legislative actions. In addition, where are, do they look to be coming in with the funds that they had from last year? Are they coming under budget? Are they coming, you know, right on budget, so that we can truly make a determination as to where we move forward? Those discussions certainly will take place, and we'll have an opportunity to do that. But to, for us to have a meeting and actually have those discussions, part of it is, we need to be able to have all that information back. And certainly, it's not that our staff aren't working on things. They are all certainly working on things, but that all takes time.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cordyak, members of the board, my name is Jerry Soma, County Administrator. As I look at my job description according to the state statutes, I do have a responsibility to prepare a budget for the board. And as Commissioner Cordyak mentioned, there's a lot of unknowns. I got some information yesterday from our budget team as to what the departments are saying is going to be their increased costs or expenses for next year, and meeting with all the departments this afternoon, urging them to make sure that that is accurate. We have yet to determine what our health insurance costs are going to be for next year. We have yet to determine exactly what our program aid is. Right now, it looks like we're going to have a decrease in program aid. If there's a special session and the tax bill is filed, it could mean an $800,000 increase for us. We have several union contracts, none of which have been resolved, and that affects our budget. So, we're looking at different scenarios now, and what that could be. It's also not uncommon. I know some of my fellow county administrators do make a recommendation to the board as to what the levy should be. Clearly, Ramsey County did it last year, and then based on that recommendation, what it means to the departments and the budgets, the board ultimately makes the decision. I don't make any decisions. I just give information to the board. At a time that it's more appropriate for us to have a better picture of this, we'll have to evaluate how we are going to have those discussions with the board. But we're still in process, and I would remind you that our budget doesn't need to be set until December. Mid-December is when we need to set the budget, and of course, the budget relates to what the levy is. And so, you need to set a levy in our last board meeting of September, and then we can really zero in on what we do with our budgets.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to hear that we're going to have a meeting later this month. It's been a concern of mine as well. And again, I'm still kind of new to the process of what we do here at the board, here at the county, compared to what we used to do in Andover. And it was always my role as mayor and working with the city council to discuss the budget throughout the year, and we did that. And I think that's a good thing to do, because you can really find out if you have some issues and some problems, and have a good discussion with, obviously, the people that are very experienced at doing that. And we all have a good experience on this board with budgets, either at the city level or the county level. So, it's always good to have those discussions. So, I'm encouraged by the fact that we're going to have that meeting later on this month. I know that when we set that levy in September, it is, we cannot go higher than that levy. We're capped off at whatever that levy is. So, it's my concern that we make sure that we're not putting ourselves behind the eight ball early in September, and then having issues that are still unknown to us coming down the road. That's why having the discussion is always, is always helpful. I'm encouraged to hear that we're going to have that discussion coming up this month, so that we can have a good discussion amongst the seven of us. So, thank you for that, and just glad to hear that we're going to, we're going to push that through.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to reiterate what Commissioner Cordyak said, in that it's been a very busy summer. And I think we're all very busy in everything that we're involved with here. And the last thing I want to do is meet for the sake of meeting, if we don't have the information in hand. But what I do clearly recall is, the last budget meeting we had, we had identified these issues coming forward. We know what they are. We know where the unknowns are, and the majority of which, again, an unusual year because of the special session coming, and depending on how that comes out, if it happens, that's going to impact us one way or another. I just think it's, I think it's, to meet for the sake of meeting, to rehash the concerns that we already know that we have, is not time well-spent. And it would be very similar, I think, Commissioner Cordyak, to maybe meeting during tax season. That may not be well-received by you.
I'd be here.
But nevertheless, nevertheless, we, I think, I think we're standing by. We want to get the information we need, and at which point, we can make the decisions and move on and not waste time.
Well, Commissioner Cordyak, I will tell you, having been around for a while myself, one of the things that used to happen is that staff essentially did it all. They would sit in a room and go through a budget book, line item by line item, saying, well, this is too much for office expenses, and this is maybe, we need more in this. That is not time well-spent for our staff. I think we hire good managers, who, that is really their role and their responsibility, and I think they've taken that pretty seriously. We are not going to micromanage every single line item within their budget. Frankly, I think that that was ludicrous to have top-level staff spending God knows how much time and energy and hours. It's not tax dollars well-spent. And, you know, maybe you were privy to some of the discussions back in the day, Commissioner Cordyak, but I can tell you, I certainly was never privy to any of the discussions. So, you know, it would be essentially the administrator and the, and the County Board Chair at the time, I think, who essentially came in and dictated what that levy was. That is not something that this County Board is going to do. It is a team effort. It's something that we will continue to move forward with. But, you know, I think that sometimes memories are just a little short.
Madam Chair, don't push me back. I go back 30 years, but the process that we used the last five to seven is the most reasonable one that I'm familiar with, and we could typically have met numerous times. If you recall, last year, we met repeatedly. I mean, a half a dozen times probably by now. We all were pushed into our various committees, all of our committees to work on budget stuff. We were doing jumping all over the place historically. This year, I have seen none of that. So, you know, the process is what it is right now, and I understand what it is. The other point about unknowns, I fully appreciate. Now, I've never known a budget that has known months ahead of time. They are all, have the same unknowns, whether it's healthcare, something else. So, you know, I, that's not a good excuse. I'd like to at least have everybody assure me that when we set the preliminary levy, which we cannot go over once we set it, it's going to be high enough that we're going to satisfy any unknowns when we have to deal with it again in December. Because I don't want to establish a .04% levy increase to find out that we need 3.4. So, just let's be prepared to set a high enough levy to be responsible, and modify it downward if we need to from there. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay. Hearing non, I think that the only other thing is just to remind everyone that it is primary election date, and encourage people to exercise their right to vote. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.